Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the—
Good evening, everybody. Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Agenda meeting for September 19th. If you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Appone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we have some poetry at the podium this evening. Kathryn Granger is going to read Kendall Yards. Welcome, Kathryn.
I live near Kendall Yards, and as they were building it, there would be all this detritus from the building and all these bricks, and so seeing the bricks sticking out of the concrete inspired this poem one day. It's all joggers now: bikes, strollers, dogs on leashes, urban hipsters, lattes in hand, lounge on cafe patios. But I can still see red splotches in the rubble, broken bricks from the buried roundhouse. I can still smell the diesel from the rail yards, feel the ghosts of boxcar riders. Restless rovers squatting by the riverbank, staggering among the rusted rails, stirring the burning embers of makeshift campsites, watched by haunted Indian eyes reliving salmon feasts. Nets and spears roar of falls, leap of fish, traitor, traitors, hangman's noose. I can still see the trash-built eagles' nests, hear screeches, cries, see talons clutching fish. On sleepless nights, train whistles still blow, echoing through the gorge, still screaming from red-mouthed furnaces, stoked by shirtless movers of metal shoveling coal, black, glistening hard, from the miners of the mountains tunneling down earth's arteries. Those denizens of the dark headlamps beamed on the shaft as headlamps of the midnight trains search the rotting trestles, the vanished bridges of Kendall Yards.
Thank you very much, Kathryn. And ongoing thanks to Spokane Arts for coordinating our Poetry at the Podium program. All right, so we—uh, one thing I wanted to note—we're going to do the Consent Agenda in a moment, and—but after that, we're going to move to hearings before we get to ordinances and resolutions. But let's see. Madam Clerk, why don't you read the Consent Agenda, and then we have one person signed up to testify.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, contract amendment with Spokane Community Oriented Policing Services to include additional funding for two victim advocates for victims of property crime from August 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $135,000. Two, memorandum of understanding between Spokane County Sheriff's Office and Spokane Police Department to subaward WASPIC grant funds for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 Regional Mental Health Field Response Team Program from June 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, $879,780. Relates to special budget ordinance C-36274. Item number three, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through September 9, 2022. Total $10,656,451.91 with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $10,546,464.91. Number four, purchase of F-650 crew cab or similar with a 38-foot enclosed trailer or similar by Fleet Services for the police department. Total estimated expenditure $192,000 deferred from September 12, 2022 agenda.
All right, and we have one person who's signed up, and that's Teresa Simon. No, five. Seeing Teresa? Not seeing her. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, that passes. All right, now, we're going to move to hearings, and we have a few of them. So we'll start with the first one.
H-1A, hearing on vacation of the alley between Everett Avenue and vacated Sanson Avenue from the east line of Julia Street to the west line of Myrtle Street as requested by Camtech Incorporated. B, first reading ordinance C-36275, vacating the alley between Everett Avenue and vacated Sanson Avenue from the east line of Julia Street to the west line of Myrtle Street. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right, the only person signed up to testify is Teresa Simon. I'm still not seeing Teresa. Any council—well, Eldon, you want to actually tell us about this? It's you.
Just a minute. Hit the wrong one, sorry. There you go.
Looks like it might going to be allowing me to do it here now. This alley's in the northeast part of town, up in Hilliard area. Yep, actually, would like to just close that alley off because of foot traffic—they've had criminal activity. It's an unused alley up in that part of town, and as you can see, it's pretty much been vacated on both sides of it. They are trying to do—use the non-user statute to vacate that alley, which basically has to be platted between 1890, 1904. This was platted in 1900. Has to be in the county when it was originally there, and it was established, like I say, I think in 1901, and it has to be in the county for five years as an unopened alley, and also has to be in the county for five years before it's annexed into the city. Those are the three components in there to be able to use the non-user statute. It meets all those. It was annexed in 1907, and so it was established in 1901, so it meets all our criteria to be vacated using the non-user statute. We did not have any city utilities in that alley. The only thing that's there is a vista has a pole, I think, in the—I think in the west 130 feet. They've got some facilities in there, so they want to retain anisement in that west 130 feet of that alley. So we would recommend vacation using the non-user statute at no cost on there and reserve anisement for the west 130 feet of that alley. There was really no closure activity to it. We do have a street improvement on Julia, which—it's paved on Julia on the west side, but they already have a driveway drop in there in that alley, which was put in as part of our project a little prematurely, but that indicates it's actually a private alley when you put a driveway drop in there. On the east side, it's totally unimproved in Myrtle Street, so there is no closure work over there. So anyway, we would recommend approval of this vacation, subject to conditions, and really, the only condition we have is maintaining anisement for a vista on the west 130 feet. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
All right, we've got you registered as aye, Councilmember Bingle. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon.
H— H-2A, hearing set by Resolution 2022-76 declaring the intention of City Council to change or establish certain assessment rates within the East Spring Parking and Business Improvement Area. H-2B, final reading ordinance C-36255 relating to the East Spring Parking and Business Improvement Area regarding changing certain assessment rates, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 4.31(c)(040).
All right, I've got three people signed up. I have Teresa Simon again, but not seeing Teresa, and Laverne Beal. And after Laverne is Doug Trudeau.
Welcome. Good to have you back.
Council President and council members, thank you for allowing us to speak on this. We have passionate board members that sit on the bid board. I am the manager of the executive director for ESBA and for the bid. We realize since rates haven't been increased since 2016 is needed to keep up with inflation. Our board members have been passionate in serving in various ways. They've hung the flower baskets themselves, they've removed graffiti, and trying to keep the cost down, but we have had increase in spending all across the board, so we hope that you approve this rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Laverne. Doug Trudeau, come on up.
Hello, Council President and members. So I was just here tonight and—to help support this deal moving forward and was available for answering questions, but Laverne kind of explained, obviously, with inflationary factors, that's really strained the bid in trying to keep it operating. But it looks good down there, so we're hoping—
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. All right, thanks. All right, is there any other council commentary? All right, prepare to vote.
Aye.
All right, you beat us to it, seven to zero. That's great, and I do just want to note that the city invested a lot of money in that neighborhood, and you guys have stepped up, and it's going great, so it's awesome.
H-3, hearing on final reading ordinance C-36270 of the City of Spokane, Washington, suspending the acceptance of annual applications for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan until completion of the city's comprehensive plan update for shaping Spokane housing, and deferring and suspending the processing of applications which cannot be completed before December 31, 2022.
Great. I don't know if there was anyone from Planning that was going to address this. There's Kevin. All right.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. It's good to see you again. Just very briefly, this is the ordinance that would suspend the private applications for any comprehensive plan amendments or for unified development code amendments for next year's consideration. The intent here, of course, is that we have quite a lot of work to do with the shaping Spokane housing program, with the follow-up to the building opportunities and choice for all program, and also because those efforts next year will be amending or looking at amendments to land use map in the comprehensive plan, Chapter III of the comprehensive plan and the municipal code, it is very difficult to consider private individual requests and to do a citywide effort at the same time. So that is—the intent here. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Kevin, thanks. And just to remind everybody, we have done this before, where we've suspended for a year when we were doing the comprehensive plan—
Correct.
—update. So this is not without precedence.
It is not without precedent. We did do it in 2017 for the same reason, which was both workload and the fact that we would be opening those chapters, and it would be difficult to amend and amend at the same time.
And just wanted to clarify and confirm, because I see a lot of people here from churches that are initiative that we're working on right now that would allow multifamily housing on church property. As council sponsors of that, that could continue on—
Correct.
—even though the suspension is there.
Absolutely. This says—this has no effect on city-sponsored proposals. This simply suspends the private applications from individual property owners or private citizens.
Okay, great. All right, we'll excuse you. We do have some public testimony, several people. Teresa Simon, again, not seeing. And I'll call up some other people, but just to go over our council testimony rules just briefly, we've got a timer here. You've got up to three minutes. It will turn yellow when there is one minute left. When it turns red, I will ask you to end, regardless of whether you're done, and come back another time and finish. We ask you to direct your comments to me. Make no disparaging remarks or personal remarks about anyone up here, or really, anyone else. Also, we don't—even though we clap for speakers at the front end, once we're in testimony, we don't do clapping or booing or anything disruptive, parading around, singing. You can have buttons, no signs. We're just trying to create a calm space, and I have, just so you know, I've had some concerns raised by—about people pounding on the podium or yelling, and I'm going to call that out going forward, that people find that disruptive and triggering. So use the power of your words, but not the volume of your voice to do that. And if there is an issue, any council member can raise a point of order to me, and I will rule on that, and if necessarily, we can have a vote on that. But anyway, I'm not imagining this group is going to be doing that, but based on who's signed up, but I'm going to call up the first person, Brian Thompson Royer. Come on down, and after Brian is Camille Troxel, and then Heather Tadlock. And there's a couple seats right here at the front, if you want to be kind of making your way down so you're ready to go.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a member of the—an elder of Bethany Presbyterian Church. We're working on feasibility for an affordable housing complex where our church is. We had a catastrophic fire on January 2nd. We've not been in the building since that time, and we are working with both Thrive and Millennium Northwest to come up with a feasible proposal to house refugees in a mixed-income apartment setting with a new church on the ground level. And we really appreciate the efforts that Planning has done with trying to open the doors for more affordable housing. Our concern and our request for an exemption—and that may not be the right term—is that we will probably be ready to do something in this next year. If it wasn't suspended, we'd probably be coming in for some action the end of October. And so we just ask your consideration for working with us to open the doors to make this possible as time goes on. There are a number of Presbyterian churches that are interested in this kind of thing. Regionally, the Presbyterian Church just is starting to look at affordable housing, and so we hope you'll take that under advisement, and thanks for this opportunity.
Thanks, Brian. And we don't usually respond specifically to people's comments, but we can provide information, and I just wanted—for those of you who weren't at a meeting or discussions—that some of us on council are working on a proposal that would apply citywide to church properties like these kinds of projects, and so hopefully, this pause would not slow that down at all, regardless of your congregation or what you're thinking. But we still want to hear from all of you tonight. So, Camille—
I'm positive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Camille, come on up and explain to us why that's a great idea.
Well, I'm Camille Troxel. I'm a ruling elder at Knox Presbyterian Church, which is a really fancy old Scottish way for saying currently serving on the Board of Directors as elected by our congregation. And we're asking you to consider allowing us to look at using our greatest assets to solve the housing—or be part of a solution for the housing problem in Spokane, and our assets are our land and our property. Mainline churches often don't have huge budgets to throw at stuff like that, but that is what we have. Knox Presbyterian Church has been at the corner of Knox and Post long enough to have the street named after it, and long enough to be one of the oldest corporations listed in the city of Spokane. And over time, we've changed our building to meet the needs of our community, so much so that when we applied to be considered a historical landmark, we were denied because the facade had changed too much. And right now, we're in a different position than Bethany. Our church obviously didn't burn down, but we are at a position where we need to consider something different because financially, we don't have options long-term. And so the opportunity came to us to be able to look at how can we repurpose what we have to meet a need in our community. And we're still very much at the phase of asking ourselves and discerning, is this what we want to do? Is this what God calls us to do? But a vital aspect of even having that conversation is knowing that there's a clear path forward and that it's even a possibility to rezone and repurpose our land and our possibilities. And so, as Brian said, our Presbyterian is so serious about this that they're currently looking at a position adding a position to explore how churches could do this in our community. And then our church, something that's exciting about that is how can we serve as a blueprint to help other churches explore? How can we help other communities get creative about how they use their land and how they use their churches to meet these very serious needs that aren't just local to Spokane, but it's a nationwide issue? So we're just asking that you consider that, especially if that's coming up in a different ordinance. We'd really like to be part of that process and to know that we can do that. As Christians, we're called at bare minimum. The bare minimum requirement of us as Christians is to meet the needs of the least of us and to meet them where they are, not where we presume that they should be. And so being able to do this would give us the opportunity to rise to that occasion and to live out our faith in service to our community and to a city that, at least for our church, we've been a part of for over 130 years. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming down, Camille. All right, then Heather Tadlock, and after Heather, Paul Rodkey, and then Dwight Hume.
Good evening. I'm Heather Tadlock, a resident of Spokane and the pastor of Bethany Presbyterian Church in Spokane. And I have to say, I am very encouraged by what I've heard tonight. Thank you. And so most of what I'm going—what I had planned to say, I'm not going to because it doesn't seem to apply. But just to reiterate what Brian had said, on January 2nd, our building had a catastrophic fire, suffered extensive damage, and out of the ashes, so to speak. Our congregation has been dreaming—and dreaming big—about how to seize upon this season of rebuilding, to further our mission, to serve our community and our neighbors in an impactful way. And so I just ask that you all consider how faith communities—not just Presbyterian churches, but faith communities—in that we have a lot to offer at a grassroots level. We have land, we have building. We want to partner with you in helping to address the housing crisis. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for helping us to do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Paul Rodkey, and then after Paul is Dwight Hume, and then Mark Finney.
Council President. You know, it's all been said, and what they said is exactly what I was hoping for. As a resident of the city, actually born and raised here, I just really affirm this creation of an idea of trying to help out communities of need, and I want to affirm that what the congregations are doing and what you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. All right. Dwight Hume, and then Mark Finney, and then Anthony Chang.
Thank you, members of the council. I've been asked to work with the churches on proposed amendments in language that would be compatible and procedurally acceptable to enable refugee housing on church sites. We would hope that we could do something—we're here tonight to request that perhaps this drafting of an ordinance—which I would be willing to do to minimize staff's interruption on what they're doing—to enable language to the effect that a site has to have a church, perhaps has to be on an arterial, has to have bus service, that sort of thing. But more importantly, it would be a conditional use process. That way, any site in town would have to hold its own hearing notices to the neighborhood. Hearing examiner, not the council, not the planning commission, has the burden of approving or disapproving. What also is important to us is that if you are gracious enough to let us do this in advance of the year-long suspension— We're here tonight to request that perhaps this drafting of an ordinance, which I would be willing to do to minimize staff's interruption on what they're doing, to enable language to the effect that a site has to have a church, perhaps has to be on an ortrial, has to have bus service, that sort of thing. But more importantly, it would be a conditional use process. That way, any site in town would have to hold its own hearing notices to the neighborhood. Hearing examiner, not the council, not the planning commission, has the burden of approving or disapproving. What also is important to us is that if you are gracious enough to let us do this in advance of the year-long suspension, really putting us two years out, is to allow this to be done and be adopted in advance of any other annual cycle issue that you're doing on Chapter III. And I think you can do that as a council, separate it out, and not create an inadvertent procedural mistake about two decisions in the same calendar year on amendments. So, that's the issue that your legal counsel can look at, and we hope you will let us do this. We're ready. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwight. Mark Finney, and then Anthony, if Anthony's here.
Thank you, Council President Beggs, and council members. My name's Mark Finney. I'm a resident here in Spokane, Washington, also the executive director of a newly-formed nonprofit called Thrive International. And I just wanna express my support for the ordinance, and also my appreciation for the room, for some flexibility as nonprofits, like the one that I lead, as well as other faith communities and other groups that we work with, try to pull our weight a little bit in the affordable housing crisis that we have here in Spokane. I just wanna say, I appreciate all of what you're doing. I know that everyone is overwhelmed by the scope of the problem, but I wanna affirm the perspective that some of my friends have shared here as well tonight, that it really takes all of us. And so, we've seen a lot of innovative solutions to other housing issues in the past here in Spokane, that have involved the public sector, and the private sector, and the nonprofit sector. I pastor a small church on the weekends and evenings called Emmaus Church over in the South Perry District, and one of our neighbor churches that we work with a lot is Bethel AME Church. And their pioneering approach to both the Emmanuel Family Life Center, as well as the Richard Allen Court Apartments, is something that we've seen here in the city before. I think that this new crisis catalyzes an opportunity for some of us to look at some of those kinds of models, and say, how can we do more like that? Because what I see as some key ingredients are the nature of broad partnerships, and lots of stakeholders, but also a combination of housing availability, and, you know, necessary funding, as well as the possibility of social services and community spaces that are proximate to where folks live. So, that's the kinda vision that Thrive seeks to cultivate in partnership with groups like Bethany, but there's also a couple other conversations that are a little further upstream than that, that we're having with other groups in town, and we think that, given the right opportunities, that we can make sure that we create some great things in a few years to come. So, thank you so much for what you're doing, and we're with you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And is Anthony here?
He's on video.
Oh, he's on video. Great. Anthony, we're elevating you here. Welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Council President Beggs. Thank you, council member. Millennium Northwest, we have the distinct honor of working closely with a number of nonprofits and faith-based organizations on some exciting projects. You've heard from Bethany, you've heard from Knox, and we're also likewise working closely with Thrive and with Excelsior. So, we have four really exciting workforce and family affordable housing projects in motion and in the pipeline. As you've heard tonight, I think there was concern about whether or not some or all of these projects might be slowed down by a significant period, given that nonprofits and faith-based organizations are perhaps our leading source of producing affordable housing in the community, and certainly gratified to hear that sponsorship from the city and the city council, thank you to all of you, would not prohibit moving forward on those projects. So, just wanna express our gratitude for continuing partnership with the city council to address the housing crisis. And just on a related and side note, we did break ground today on the Monroe Project, so thank you for the council and staff's support on that project, and we recently submitted for permits on the Garland Project. So, we're really excited about continuing to collaborate and work with everyone, both at the city and among our community, to build more housing for the community. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. And congrats on the groundbreaking. All right, that's the end of public testimony. It kinda turned into a preview of another ordinance that's gonna be coming your way, that's, I think, really exciting, but again, just shows how some people in the community can have an idea, and gain people together, so. But any council commentary on the moratorium for this year? Councilmember Cathcart.
Council President, I think your microphone is muted.
I'm sorry. Hang on. Sorry.
All right.
Are we working? Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. So, this ordinance gives me an immense amount of heartburn, but I get the reason for it, and I understand it. And because we have had more than an hour and six minutes to digest it and understand it, like the previous, unlike the previous moratorium, I've been able to ask questions, get some responses, and really understand how this is working, which actually puts me at ease. And I think that the outcome will actually be a really positive one, despite, I think, some delays potentially for some projects. But, that being said, I am committed, as long as I'm here, to, on my own initiative, I will be happy to sponsor those as interim, if they make sense, they're thoughtful, if they mean more jobs, if they mean more housing units for our community. I'm happy to bring those forward for council consideration. We can still do that, even though there will be a pause here, but I'm happy to bring those forward. I don't want to lose the opportunity for any jobs. I don't wanna lose the opportunity for any housing units. And so, if there are projects that are gonna get missed because of this pause, then I would like to bring those forward as an interim for this council to consider. I'll leave it there. I'm gonna vote for this tonight. Again, it gives me a lot of heartburn, because we are in the midst of a housing crisis and a lot of issues going on, but I do think ultimately, the outcome of this is gonna result in an easier path to accomplishing a lot of what gets accomplished in a very difficult and not-so-timely way currently, and I think we're gonna see some improvement. So, I will vote yes tonight.
Councilmember Schraddan.
So, I'm gonna balance, Councilmember Cathcart, he has heartburn, and... I just want to let the group know that this absolutely warmed my heart tonight. Thank you for coming down to the churches, to the nonprofit Thrive, to Anthony. This gives me hope that as a community, we can come together and see rules for what they are, but when we need to, when it's for the greater good, we need to have discussions and maybe move off the side of the road to get things done. But I really, really appreciate this. It was a good way to start a meeting, and you set an example of wanting partnerships, wanting to help your fellow man and woman and families, and I'm impressed, and I'm hopeful. So, thank you so much for coming down.
Other council commentary. Yeah, I'll just note, this is really an amazing opportunity for us. So, in the old world, if you wanted to do something a little more interesting, you had to do a private application, you had to pay the money to do it, and go through all of that. By doing a pause this year of private applications that will only benefit a few owners, we will change, have the capacity, change the rules, so that everybody can apply for a duplex, or triplex, or fourplex, and do something innovative. So, it is hard, because there's limited resources, but I'm super excited, and the leadership of the Planning Department to say, hey, we make this change, you know, we're teaching everybody to fish, instead of just handing out a few fish every year. So, excited about that. Prepare to vote.
Aye.
All right. Got you, Councilmember Bingle. That's seven to zero. And let's go back to the top, special budget ordinances.
Do we have consent agenda?
We already did that.
Did that. Never mind.
Ordinance C 36273, amending ordinance number C 36161, passed by the City Council December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency and appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36273, Channel 5 Equipment Reserve Fund, number one, increase the appropriation by $74,000. A of the increased appropriation, $74,000 is provided solely for the purchase of data storage and video production equipment for the Communications Department. B, the appropriation increase is funded from the Channel 5 Equipment Reserve Funds Unappropriated Reserves. This action arises from the need to purchase video production and storage equipment.
All right, we have two people signed up. Chris Shuler is first, followed by Teresa Simon.
Hello, City Council.
Welcome.
I put down that I'm against this. I oppose it, because I have noticed that your Channel 5 people, have you ever watched City Council on TV and the internet? I noticed that they're displaying a lot of biased behavior when you have a really controversial subject, where you pack, you know, there's a whole bunch of people coming here to testify on something. I noticed the cameraman, who, where I watch it on the internet, will zoom in really dramatically when it's somebody who's speaking for what the council agenda wants them to vote for, what you end up voting for. It's like this dramatic thing, where, you know, I, you know, it's liberal, the liberal side of things. When they're up here testifying, the cameraman will zoom in really dramatically to their face, like it's, you know, it's the most important thing to hear. And then, when the other side, that is not what you vote for, the conservative side, when they speak about something, they never do that. There's none of that. It's, they're zoomed out. And so, I have noticed a lot of display of bias, unethical behavior with the cameraman on what they zoom in and don't zoom in on when people are talking. That needs to stop. They need to display no biased behavior, and no unethical behavior, or no favoritism towards which side of, you know, the topic that people are talking on. That's why. So, I think that when, when, when there's bias going on, that you can see, they don't deserve any taxpayer's money, or extra taxpayer money. They need to be, to be blocked and changed to people who are not so biased. That's why I oppose it.
Thanks for testifying. And Teresa Simon? Are you here? I don't see her. Okay. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I support this. It's gonna come out of the PEG fund, so it's not really directly out of the general fund, and anything we can do, I think, to just increase access is a good thing, and some of the, one of the purchases here has to do with data storage, that will actually let them get videos posted quicker, more efficiently, so I think it's a great thing. I do support Channel 5. I think transparency makes a ton of sense and accessibility, so happy to support this tonight.
Any other commentary? All right, prepare to vote. Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. That passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36274, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, number one, increase revenue by $879,780. A of the increased revenue, $879,780 is from SCSO, as a grant passed through of WASP awarded funding. Number two, increase appropriations by $879,780. A of the increased appropriation, $772,525 will be used to create five new positions with one position already in place. B, $97,255 will be used to fund overtime related to grant activity. C, $10,000 will be used for travel and training costs. This action arises from the need to accept funding for the regional mental health teams.
All right, we have two people signed up for this as well, and Chris Shuler first, and followed by Teresa Simon.
Hello, again, City Council. I forgot last time. My name's Chris Shuler. I am a citizen of Spokane. I live downtown, in an apartment building, and the reason I oppose this is because these mental health officers, behavioral health officers, you're getting new ones, these are the scariest things for conservatives who, you know, or anybody who doesn't wanna see our city being turned into socialism, and, you know, control freakism. These are the scariest people. They somehow have more authority and power than, than a police officer does, and that's what's wrong. And I realize this money is coming from a state level, or something that's not so local, it's like a grant, you know, and so, it's like, why turn down free money, you know, for something? But the reason is, is because these mental health workers are gonna end up costing lawsuits to the city that are, you know, 10 times, 50 times, as what money you're getting for them, because they are abusing their authority. They can say anything they want. And like, if a person's committing a crime, and a police officer is called, and, you know, sees that, hey, there's a crime committed, then the person should be arrested. But what's happening is, these mental health workers, behavioral health workers, are pulling people that haven't committed any crime whatsoever. They might be angry and saying, get away from me, you're not my boss, you can't tell me what to do, I'm not committing any crime, you know, leave me alone, stop harassing me. And that's a reason that they can pick you up and haul you off to psych jail. For instance, knocking on my door and ordering me to be redirected from the subject of politics, threatening me that if I come to City Council, that they're gonna lock me in a jail, and in a psych jail, over the subject of politics. See, they don't have any rights to do these things, even to the point that they don't like what you're wearing. I wear fleece fabric skirts over my leggings, you know, to be respectable and modest. It's not the only fabric I wear, but a mental health worker can just say, hey, we don't like the fabric of your skirt, so we're gonna haul you off to psych jail. They literally did that, okay, calling it some sort of sweatshirt fabric wrapped around her legs. It's called a skirt. And, and, and so, these, this money that you're getting is gonna end up costing, if they're not trained, the training that they need is the Constitution. They need to understand due process and the Constitution, and not just haul people off for things when they haven't committed a crime, or anything, if they're, they're just saying, hey, I want my constitutional rights. That's not a reason to be hauled off. So, you really need to focus on the training, on what kinda training that they are getting. It should be constitutional training.
Thanks for testifying, Chris. And Teresa Simon? Still not seeing you. Okay. All right. Any council commentary? I'm just gonna note, the behavioral health officers are partnered with patrol officers, and it's been one of the most successful interventions, and it's been very unifying in the community, from people who are concerned with the police, people who are concerned we don't have enough police. These partnerships have been very effective, and everyone agrees, they have diverted people every month who would be sent to jail, or a mental hospital, are not, and it's, it's been great. And so, I'm very grateful that our department has embraced this, and Frontier Behavioral Health has partnered with us, and really, I'm hoping that we see more of it, because it has great results, saves us lots of money, frees up police to do real policing. So, I'm gonna support it. All, prepare to vote.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember Bingle. That's seven to zero. And that will bring us to an emergency ordinance.
In this ordinance, I will read in its entirety. Ordinance number C 36281, an ordinance improving the standards for the city's efforts to help unhoused and vulnerable people, amending section 18.05.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code and declaring an emergency. Whereas homelessness continues to be an issue of public concern in Spokane, and whereas at the same time, Spokane is in the midst of a severe shortage of available housing for all people at all income levels, and the shortage is a crisis for those who need shelter and related services in Spokane. And whereas these crises, which persist even during normal weather conditions, are exacerbated whenever Spokane faces extreme conditions such as smoke from wildfires, which make the air unsafe to breathe, and whereas wildfire smoke has been on a consistent rise in the past two decades, with Spokane averaging eight unhealthy days per year, and whereas an air quality index of 150 is considered unhealthy for all people per the Environmental Protection Agency, and whereas the city of Spokane recognizes the dangers to public health and safety caused by wildfire smoke, and closes all aquatic and outdoor recreation programs. Once the air quality index reaches 150, and whereas in order to protect unhoused individuals who are at greater risk of health concerns from wildfires, smoke, the city of Spokane must activate safe air centers. And whereas per section 18.05.020A3 of the Spokane Municipal Code, the city of Spokane opens safe air centers when the air quality index reaches 250, and whereas the dangers to public health and safety are apparent at an air quality index of 150, and whereas all of these facts establish that there exist in Spokane emergency conditions which present a threat to the public health and safety, and which require that this... to public health and safety are apparent at an air quality index of 150, and whereas all of these facts establish that there exist in Spokane emergency conditions which present a threat to the public health and safety and which require that this ordinance be made effective immediately pursuant to section 19a of the city charter. Now therefore, the city of Spokane does ordain section one that section 18.05.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code is amended to read as follows. Section 18.05.020, activation criteria. A, the activation criteria for inclement weather centers beyond existing homeless shelter capacity in the city of Spokane are as follows. Number one, warming centers sufficient to meet the shelter needs of currently unsheltered homeless individuals and other vulnerable individuals seeking shelter in Spokane will be activated on each day during which the temperature is predicted by the National Weather Service to be 32 degrees Fahrenheit or lower, and designated low barrier shelter space was at 90%, 90% capacity or greater during the previous night. The warming centers will operate at a minimum during the hours that temperatures are lower than 32 degrees Fahrenheit. The city may by contract with its center providers raise the activation temperature for warming centers, but in no event will the activation temperature be lower than 32 degrees Fahrenheit. Number two, cooling centers sufficient to meet the shelter needs of currently unsheltered homeless individuals and other vulnerable individuals seeking cooling shelter within the city will be activated when the temperature is predicted by the National Weather Service to be 95 degrees Fahrenheit or higher for two consecutive days or more. The cooling centers will be operated at a minimum during all hours when the temperature is 95 degrees Fahrenheit or higher. The city may by contract with its center providers extend the hours of operation indoor or lower the activation temperature for cooling centers. The city should seek out a network of cooling center locations throughout the city at schools, libraries, churches, and community centers, and encourage other municipal governments to join in providing a regional cooling center network. Number three, safe air centers sufficient to meet the shelter needs of currently unsheltered homeless individuals and other vulnerable individuals seeking safe air shelter within the city will be activated for the entire day and evening on which the Spokane Regional Clean Air Agency forecasts the current air quality index to reach 201 or higher. Number four, emergency centers may also be activated by the mayor of the mayor's designee on any day in which a civil emergency or extreme storm or weather condition exists or is predicted to occur and which in the determination of the mayor of the mayor's designee poses a severe threat to the health or safety of vulnerable and unsheltered homeless individuals and families in the city of Spokane. B, the Community Health and Human Services Department shall implement the appropriate policies and procedures, including without limitation, making funding requests, recommendations regarding center providers, the designation of specific locations to be used as warming, cooler, and safe air centers, the arrangement of other appropriate measures to the City Council in order to carry out the specific provisions and intent of this section, and shall continuously maintain contracts and/or appropriate non-monetary agreements scalable to the need for the emergency warming, cooling, and safe air center provider services with no lapse in coverage at any point in time throughout each year, regardless of whether the services are provided under contract by inter-local agreement or by city staff. Number three, no later than September 30 of each year and annually thereafter, the city shall publish and disseminate the city's plan for emergency warming, cooling, and safe air centers for the coming year, which shall provide details of the names and locations of center providers and similar resources, the capacity and scalability of all emergency centers by type and populations, focus of any activation criteria, cost, funding sources, partnerships, and the communications and publicity plan to ensure that people who are vulnerable or experiencing homelessness will know where they can, can obtain these services. Section two, that the City Council declares that an urgency and emergency exists such that this ordinance is needed for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, and/or for the immediate support of city government and its existing public institutions, and that because of such need, this ordinance shall be effective immediately under section 19 of the city charter upon the affirmative vote of one more than a majority of the City Council.
All right, thank you. Councilman Zepone, you want to kick us off on this, and then I'll get some public testimony?
Yeah, so this ordinance came up as an emergency, really in response to the smoke that we've had recently in the last few weeks. I messaged Brian Cottington from the administration to ask him, when are we activating the, the safe air centers? And he responded with the plan, saying that was going to open at 250 on the air quality index. And really, we looked back and saw that that was not really adequate, and we all know that it's hazardous. If we look at the AQI recommendations, the city closes all outdoor and aquatic centers at 150, the schools close at 150 AQI. So it's really a discussion about where should we set that? The city starts paying hazard pay for its employees at 201 AQI. And so this is a recognition that 250 is really too high for the safe air centers to be activated. We heard from the administration today that it doesn't cost any extra, now that the Trent Resource Center is open, it doesn't cost any extra to make it available. So this is really about making it known to the public that this safe air center is available and that people can go there if it's needed. And so we discussed it earlier today and settled on 201 as the next step, and then look forward to hearing more from public health officials about whether we should expand this to 150.
All right, thanks. All right, so Chris Schuler is first, and after Chris, Teresa Simon.
I'm Chris Schuler, citizen of Spokane. I was just listening to Councilmember Zepone talk about that. He said the schools close when it gets to 150, so I don't know how they're going to open them. I mean, it's, it's very contradictory to say that the schools are closing when it hits 150, but this ordinance says that you want to open them for homeless people. That part doesn't quite make sense. Why aren't they, you know, if they got to close, then why are they closing if they're going to open? Okay? It's totally nonsensical what you said there. But I have no problem with the changing. You're changing it from 250 to 150? That doesn't seem to be a problem at all. But what I do have a problem with is in here, it says, in section two, it says, "The city should seek out a network of cooling center locations throughout the city at schools, libraries, churches, and community centers, and encourage other municipal governments to join in." Okay, I want to point out that churches are not government entities. You've got churches mixed in with schools, libraries, and community centers. And churches are not city-owned property. They're not public property. They're private. And now, like earlier, the churches were here talking today about wanting to become, you know, transition into affordable housing and become like residential landlords of poor people. That's a completely different subject. If a church wants to open up, you know, for any reason, hey, homeless people, come on in here, for any reason at all, they can do that. Churches are private. But when you put in an ordinance that the city should seek out churches to open them up for homeless people and calling them a government, municipal government, and part of that, they're not. Churches are private, and they shouldn't be in here. And this isn't underlined, so it seems that it's not a new part of this, that it's been that way. And that should be taken out because no church should be forced to take homeless people in because the schools aren't going to open because for some reason, whatever he said, that they're going to close anyway. And so, yeah, churches, churches are private. The city does not own churches at all. I wanted to make that clear.
Thanks, Chris. Teresa Simon?
I've been sitting in court all day, so I ran home and ran back. If schools are for the public, schools are also for the homeless. And we have to figure out a way to make some of the space available because it's paid for, it's used, I'm taxed for it. It's safer. As for the church comment, I hear that a lot about people saying that the churches should do more for the homeless. I can't tell you how many churches in this community are really, really, really showing up, hitting the mark, making the sandwiches, filling in when there's a shooting someplace and food has to make it out to Camp Hope. 18% of the population goes to church, so I want to know what the other, what 88% of us are doing? I think we need to do something for the homeless, so I think we need to shelter them positively. And we need to love them, and we need to give them hope. And we need to keep them safe and healthy and with treatment. And we need to stop saying, not my neighborhood. By the way, I live five blocks from Camp Hope. I think all of us need to look at ourselves and say, what is it we're doing? Because that's how I ended up with three homeless houses. I said, oh, mayor's going to do something, Ben's going to do something. And I looked and I said, well, what am I doing? And we just finished remodeling a house, so that's the one you pick. You fill it up with homeless people. Then you end up with another one, and another one, and now another one. And the cops aren't out there, so I think it's a misnomer that these people are going to destroy everything they touch. That's not true. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. All right, any council commentary? Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I think I said schools close at 150, and it was outdoor activities that the schools close at 150 AQI. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Well, I just want to clarify, it says should, not shall. So we're not mandating, but we do want a network where people have somewhere to go in their neighborhood. I'm not going to leave my house and go to the Trent Shelter when the air is not healthy. But if we partner with our libraries and our schools where people already feel safe, then that is the goal we're trying to achieve. And also, we are trying to get clarity on the right number that's across the board. So it's not confusing where kids can't go outside, employees can't work. We're really looking, and we'll be getting more information on that and be bringing that back because really, we want to strive for consistency in this air.
Any other council commentary? All right, just want to thank Councilmember Zepone for bringing this forward. Last year, we talked about doing this, and the administration asked us to pause for a bit, and, and now they've, true to their word, they've agreed to this once asked. So I appreciate the administration coming forward and look forward to getting more health information to know really, is it 151 or 201? But we're going to do 201 for now. So with that, prepare to vote. Thank you, Councilmember Ringel. That passed the seven to zero. And that gets us to a resolution.
Resolution 2022-82, declaring Stryker Sales Corporation Redmond, Washington a sole source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a 10-year contract to provide Stryker ALS 360 SFD Capital Medical Devices Program for the city's Spokane Fire Department beginning in 2023. $449,770.08 plus sales tax annually without public bidding.
All right, one person signed up, Teresa Simon. Do you want to? No, she's diverse, okay. Any council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. Thank you, Councilmember Ringel. Seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36272, relating to the protection of public lands and properties, and amending sections 12.02.10.02, .1010, .1012, and .1014 of Article 6 of Title 12.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
All right, we have several people that want to testify about this. Do you want to give any introductory remarks?
No.
Okay. All right, Dave Bilsland, and then Emily Cameron, then Chris Batten. Here he comes. Dave, we just called you. And Dave, I don't know if you were here when I was giving introductory remarks, but we're trying to keep our volume to normal levels, so.
The problem with this ordinance is that it's anti, it's anti-homeless. You're directly pointing this at the homeless, which is insisting on cruel and unusual punishment by fining them when they don't have any money, and they're going to end up being arrested, and they're going to end up in the jails. Is that where we want housed people? No, we have other places to do it. We're working on it. But we're still short 25,000 units, and you're going to hassle people for being homeless when they have no choice? This is not the choice they want to make. This is not where they want to live, obviously. We need to work on tiny houses. We need to work on more housing. More shelters are temporary, but we need to work on more housing. And until you get the housing, this ordinance is, should be dead in the water. You need to defer it. Now, quite frankly, I've had, what, nine, 10 days to look at it, and I'm not a freaking lawyer? I need a lawyer to look at this. How in the heck am I going to arrange funding and get a lawyer to look at this in 10 lousy days? This is dishonorable, to do this. You just threw it at us without any fair warning. Could have said something about you were working on it, and you didn't. We have not had adequate time to address this. I haven't been able to raise a number of people, I haven't been able to have time to go out and talk to the homeless and tell them about it. This is beyond unfair. This is dishonest by only giving us 10 days. This is unhonorable. Defer, defer, defer. Give us more time, please.
Thank you, Dave. Emily Cameron, then Chris Batten, and Melanie Perry.
Good evening, council members. Emily Cameron with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. The efforts to address homelessness and public safety are some of the most pressing issues facing Spokane. The DSP manages a contract with more than 1,300 businesses, residents, and property owners located in downtown, and we consistently hear concerns about the impact of illegal camping. Obstructed sidewalks and underpasses create conditions that prevent access, impede business, and render our sidewalks impassable. The updates in this ordinance can be a start to ensure safe and clean public rights away, preserve our environment, and reinstate a tool to encourage utilization of shelter and services. But the impacts on our city's neighborhoods, especially in downtown, are growing and will require further action. We understand the balance of updating this ordinance, and we can help those who are most vulnerable in our society while ensuring the health and safety of everyone. While the best option is a broader designation that prohibits camping in downtown entirely, in the meantime, in this ordinance, we urge you to consider some of the amendments you heard from Councilmember Cathcart, in particular, extending access to and from railroad viaducts and shelters to improve access. Illegal camping has proven to be extremely hazardous. These encampments leave neighbors helpless as they navigate unsanitary and dangerous conditions that accompany them. Litter, fire, feces, drug paraphernalia, and all too often intimidating behavior by individuals in these camps. Employees are telling their employers they're scared to come back to work. Customers are staying away, choosing to visit and spend in other communities, and residents no longer feel safe in their own neighborhood. This summer, I've heard pleas from downtown asking, when will enough be enough? The time for action is now. If not now, when will I survive? And today's conditions are jeopardizing our future. Too many swamp businesses are asking, I survived the pandemic, will I survive today's challenges? We appreciate the difficulty of challenging, in challenges within an ordinance like this. We can maintain clean and public rights away. We can ensure our community is safe, and we look forward to working with you. We cannot afford to ignore illegal camping. It threatens too many, the housed and unhoused alike. Thank you for your attention on this important issue.
Thanks, Emily. Chris Batten. After Chris is Melanie Perry, and then Rick Bocot.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Batten. I'm the chairman of the Downtown Spokane Partnership, a property owner and business owner in downtown Spokane. It is my opinion this ordinance is less than what we need. In short, it is better than no ordinance. It also remains critically important that you urgently revisit and amend the ordinance regulating sit-and-lie ordinance enforcement to remove the requirement for shelter beds as, as, as it pertains to enforcement of sit-and-lie. I think it's important to understand that, we've come to understand that there is no requirement within sit-and-lie for shelter beds under the Boise, Martin versus Boise Sit-and-lie is a tool to focus on shelter for unhoused, but the two policies are not interdependent. Sit-and-lie is a tool to manage negative behavior as a result. Enforcement should not be dependent on shelter bed availability. Spokane needs enforcement of rules to keep our shelter, our sidewalks clean and accessible. As we have seen with enforcement of sit-and-lie resuming last week, the ability to enforce the law is often enough to proactively prevent some of the very issues it is designed to address. address. So beyond this ordinance, I would ask you to go back and please revisit sit-and-lie, removing the requirement for additional shelter beds. It is not necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Melanie Perry, then Rick Bocook, and Michael McGuire. Hi, Melanie.
Hello. I'm back again. And I oppose any changes to these ordinances right now. They, like, I've written a lot, and it's hard to speak right now. I just, I get upset when people worry more about business and money than about people's lives and the way that, what needs to be done to help people. And just using the police against people in crisis and in need of care doesn't work. This can't be the only solution. Every time this comes up, it's always fines and policing and, and like jail time because you can't pay fines and all that. And it's just, the issues are a lot, and putting people in these kind of situations just makes things worse, and it's going to continue to make things worse. We should be thinking of other ways and other plans of just helping people and moving things in a positive direction. This is just, it's just awful to be thinking about this sort of thing. It's, people talk about, like, they're being trashed, and there being, like, feces on the ground and all that. Like, that can be taken care of with public restrooms and trashcans and housing, housing, giving people places to live, not shuffling them around and making up such things. So I just very much oppose any kind of camping ordinance or sit-and-lie or anything like that. We need to be thinking differently, not just keep hitting everything with the same hammer because it's not going to change things or make anything better. Thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Rick Bocook. After Rick, Michael McGuire, and then Chris Schuler.
Good evening, Rick Bocook. I get, you know, people are all freaked out about people's camping and stuff like that. I don't think a lot of people that are taught, you know, have ever been homeless. They never really lived on the streets. They've been given silver spoons most of their life. That's okay. I wouldn't mind giving a silver spoon most of my life. But there's certain things in this ordinance, you know, like when he said, I think he said three blocks from any shelter. I mean, are you defining shelters? I mean, they just put a creepy forced religion one up by Chaz Clinic. I mean, the guy even has things on his signs about how they have to obey, but it's a shelter now, and he's just kitty-corner from Chaz Clinic. There's a lot of people that stay up in those areas, and there, you know, there's that city gate. It's not really a shelter, but I guess it could be. But a lot of people, they hang around these places, you know, because they might not go to the shelters, but they'll go there to eat. They do do that. They go there to get a break. So when you're putting that one in there, you're really putting a marginalization on people. You're actually, you know, I mean, this ordinance is actually making more criminalization of the homeless. I mean, you think about what happens when you turn somebody into a criminal? Okay, let's start this one level. You're just doing this one level of criminal. What's next? It keeps going up. And when are they going to start stealing? I'm not saying that they want to do that, but if you criminalize people, that's what you're doing. You're saying, "You're a criminal now because you're not obeying our rules." And this thing about the sit-and-lie, I know about the sit-and-lie. I know very clearly about it. It has constitutional expression in there. It also has disabilities. Now, this is a statement you hear about. You hear it in the papers, news. They just talk about, like, say, 70, 80% of the people that are homeless have mental health issues. That's a disability. And are you going to put that in there? So when somebody has a disability, are they going to be exempt? Because it is a disability to have mental health issues. And I just think about this camping ordinance. It's, you got, it needs to be refined a little bit, you know? And the viaduct, I talked about the metal lead poisoning places, these other places, they're going to go for shelter where there's no rain and stuff. They're going to go for that. Sorry to hear about all this stuff. This is terrible, what you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Michael McGuire. After Michael, Chris Schuler, and then Teresa Simon.
Council President Biggs, members of the City Council, Michael McGuire, Spokane, Washington. We can learn from the poor. Most poor people are generous and forgiving. Pope Paul VI said the poor should be honored and respected. Perhaps have a town hall meeting here at Spokane City Hall with the poor. Listen and learn. Today, the poor being shelved from place to place. Yes, public safety is important, and so is the public safety of the poor. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Chris Schuler, then Teresa Simon, then Dale Brees.
Hello, I'm Chris Schuler from Spokane Citizen. I support this ordinance. This ordinance doesn't say it's about sit-and-lie. I thought that that's a different thing. So I don't know why people are talking about the wrong thing up here. This ordinance spoke about protecting public property, public land, and because it's a city ordinance, it should be limited to city public-owned land or Spokane-owned land. And so I support it. Nobody should be camping on public land, whether they're homeless or not. So it's not really targeting homeless, even though the homeless are the ones that are doing that. That nobody should be camping on the river or public parks or, you know, under these bridges. I completely support this as it's written, and I want to make sure you understand that the Camp Hope is not on city-owned land. That's state land. They bought that. I used to live there in a house. That's how I became homeless. They just came through in year 2010, tore it all down. We don't care if you have anywhere to live. You have to wait. I had to wait two years for them to build an apartment building, you know? So I think, because I used to live out there in a house paying property taxes, it is state land. Once the state bought that land, the city said, "Oh, not our problem. The state owns it. You take it up with them." Okay? So I want to make sure that everybody understands Camp Hope is not city land. That is state land. And this camping ordinance does not prohibit the homeless people, or if, they don't even have to be homeless. You can live in a home and take your camping trip on Camp Hope if you want to, all right? It's not city land. And so anybody who's complaining that, you know, that the homeless can't camp downtown anymore, or they can't camp anymore, where they're going to go, they can go to that state land where Camp Hope is. Go to the next block or the next block because it's all state land. It's not a waterway. It's not a public park. It's not a viaduct. There's no road structures there. It's the perfect place for them to be and not anywhere all over the city. So this is a very good law. You should have made this no camping law that this is. You should have done it a couple of years ago.
Thanks, Chris. Teresa Simon, and then after Teresa, Dale Brees, and then, I think, Marilyn Darlick.
I vote that all land is public land. It's not private land. And I vote all private land should be able to not be stuck on hold while the county figures it out. And I vote that if you don't have housing for people, then you shouldn't be mandating that they can't camp if they can't sit, and they can't stand, and they can't lay, and they can't this, and they can't that. Why don't we start talking about what they can do? You know, I watch YouTube videos of social workers that lost their homes, and they've been on the streets for years, can't get a job, don't have a mailbox. Why don't you guys put some mailboxes on that land that you're camping? Let these people get their mail so they can get their jobs, so they can get their IDs. It's not that complicated. It's really not. It doesn't have to be. I don't know how many of you bother to get up and pray every day. Pray for the homeless. Pray for solutions. Pray for guidance. Pray for love. Pray for insight. I don't know what to tell you. I don't think you should be taking away the camping. There's no place for them to go. You already know how they're suffering. You've walked through Camp Hope. How many of you have walked through Camp Hope? Okay? So what are we doing here? We don't need to make more rules. We need to make more solutions. I don't think you turned your light on. It's still on green, and I've been going.
You got five seconds to turn to yellow.
Oh, good. You can have it. Thanks.
Thanks, Teresa. Dale, come on down, and Marilyn Darlick, and then Greg Bogart. And I forgot to say this earlier, some people have been doing anyway, but if you're from Spokane, tell us that. If you're from someplace else, tell us that. Hi, Dale.
Well, good evening, council. Thank you, council president. My name is Dale Brees, and I'm actually a Spokane County resident just on the West End, right across Government Way, against Indian Canyon. I'm here in regards to the ordinance, but also I'm here because I'm here for the wellness of all the community. Just about the ordinance, which I really haven't read in its entirety, but yet, you haven't listed Greenwood Creek, okay? That comes down from Indian Canyon Falls into the Leita Valley. And because I live right next to a bunch of homeless camps there at times, some of them are healthy, some of them are not healthy, you know? But I'm actually a neighbor that actually engages with and sort of, you know, asks questions and try to refer out also. But then I know the homeless services within our community. You know, I think there's a deferred, preferred, deferred for my own being for this ordinance because there's still not enough beds in the shelters. Where should the rest of the campers go? Mostly because we're at this crossroads intersectionality of the right-of-way money within our community. If that was to blow up with the administration upstairs, where would all those campers go? I don't want a panic in my community. I don't want them just running. You know, years ago, before we had all the PSH programs downtown, the Permanent Support of Housing programs, we, as I was an outreach worker in Spokane, we actually got more calls from residential neighborhoods and homes of, like, people living in garages and such. It made the outreach efforts much more expensive. Our outreach right now is coordinated assessment downtown or, you know, and that would have to adjust a little bit because the homeless are not probably going to walk to downtown. They're going to stay away, maybe actually even sort of, you know, honor the boundaries which you would set for sit-and-lie or the camping. You know, the messaging that we're all trying to go through as we have all these integrations happening, I feel right-of-way, the camping, maybe sit-and-lie, we really have to be methodical, but we also have to make sure we're messaging this to the community and to the homeless. We don't want panics. We want action, you know, and preferred, like, steps. Where is this going to be? And that's all I ask. And I would, I think a defer is really a great place to put on this just because it might get us 30 days till we know more where the right-of-way is going to happen, if there's going to be lawsuits or whatever's happening. But I just prefer no panic per se. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. All right, Marilyn, and then Greg Bogart, and then Sarah Neelands.
Hi, and I'll clarify, it's Marilyn Darlick, like garlic. That board's been lit up green unanimously almost all evening, and I'd love to see it lit up all red, but at the very least, like's been suggested, a deferral, I think, is in order because I'm testifying in opposition to this. And while I can appreciate the desire and attempt to compromise with some of City Council and those who do the bidding of the mayor, I believe this compromise ordinance expends resources better spent on meaningful, lasting efforts. Create spaces where the unhoused can exist until there is sufficient housing and shelter available. The messaging is important, and we need to identify where some of these folks can go. Camp Hope has exploded. I've been out there half a dozen times. Like the other one young lady said, "Where are the porta-potties?" You know? We need to have more public restroom facilities for people, for all people. When you get to be a woman my age, you know, you're on the look for restrooms when you're downtown or anywhere else for any period of time. So, you know, point should be well-taken. Let's provide some hygiene facilities for people so that they're readily available and garbage cans throughout city blocks. That's something I'm sure the business community would be willing to contribute towards. This measure doesn't move the unhoused closer to basic, essential human needs of safe, habitable shelter. This ordinance serves only to add another scaffold of trauma for the unhoused and meaningless feel-good for the tough-on-crime folks. What's needed is visionary leadership, fiscal responsibility, and personnel resources effectively spent problem-solving. Utilizing the goodwill efforts of homelessness, house, housing, health, and social service advocates is what will deliver significant, measurable results for the long haul. This didn't happen overnight, and it won't be resolved by the next election cycle. We all need to keep at the work to resolve this tremendous community need. So homelessness is a housing problem, and we need to be about the business of solving this problem. It represents layered trauma, policy, and societal failures that are ballooning due to marketizing housing as a wealth-building tool for investors and increasing wealth inequities that continue to ravage our middle-class and lower-income working folks. And we need to interrupt that, not just to add another layer of trauma to those who are struggling. So please, let's put our resources and efforts towards something that's really going to have an impact in the positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Greg Bogart, and then Sarah Neelands, and then William Heelings.
Council president, council members, thank you very much. I'm so glad we can all agree to disagree tonight and that we're in a forum and we're in a country that we're allowed to do that. So I hope people take that privilege and responsibility very seriously. I came down to say that I don't think this ordinance goes far enough. I understand that the council members, or Councilmember Cathcart, had a stricter more proposal that was struck down earlier. You know, a couple of months ago, I was down here and asking you not to penalize us citizens for watering during the day. And so you guys went ahead, five of you out of the seven, said, "No, no, we want to penalize you for watering during the day." But yeah, I feel now that you're penalizing us because you're not going far enough on the sit-and-lie ordinance. We put up with a lot in the last two, three years. And people talk about homelessness, and that's a very broad subject, you know? We don't talk about how they got there. We know that they're people. We know that they have issues. But you know what? At the same time, I haven't heard tonight the word accountability. Where is accountability at in this factor? I haven't heard it from anybody. You want to talk about solutions? Let's talk about accountability. Let's talk about bad decisions, all right? When I was raising my kids, I said, "Hey, kids, you got two choices. You can make a good choice or a bad choice. If you make a good choice, you got a good outcome. You make a bad choice, you got a bad outcome." So let's, I'm not heartless, but at the same time, I'm tired of putting up with what the garbage we see in downtown. I'm downtown a lot. You know, I'm downtown between 4:30 and 5:30 in the morning, and I go down and work out at a gym. I run the streets on Third Avenue. If you'd love to, come join me some morning, and I'll take you down some nefarious areas. And, you know, you talk about, hey, it's easy, you can just clean up the streets. We need more garbage cans. We need more water. We need more of this. I drive by the Brown Bear Car Wash at, you know, 4:30, 4:45, 5 o'clock in the morning, and I feel sorry for the owner of that business. It's an absolute disaster. They go in there, their dumps are diving. It's bad enough your dumps are diving, but at least put it back in the garbage can when you're done. There's no respect, absolutely none, zip, zero, nada. And I, as a citizen, I'm supposed to have compassion because you're making a, you're not, you know, because we're going to do a sit-and-lie ordinance? No, we need to make it tougher, folks. I mean, seriously. You know, we're tired of this. I mean, there is so much re- I mean, there's so much resources out there. It's incredible. In closing, you know, Senator Billig had an accountability meeting on substance abuse disorder in the criminal justice system. Two takeaways. One, there's only one question about, hey, part of the problem is drugs. Let's deal with the drug issue. Let's deal with the drug dealer. Let's make it penalized. Let's make it hard for him. The other thing is Chief Midle said, "You know what? It's great that you guys want to have, offer all these services, but what about the victims of the citizens in Spokane?" So, all right? So, let's start thinking about those things. Let's, I want to close with one thing. If you guys aren't careful, there's a whole lot of, in the words of Zig Ziglar, the great philosopher, there's a whole lot of stinking thinking going on. I would ask that you guys rethink your thinking. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. And I'd like to invite up Sarah. And also, just to mention the people, you, please don't talk to each other. Other people can hear. It's distracting. If you would like to have a conversation, you can go out there and you can still hear the people testify. Sarah.
Good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Sarah Neelands, and I reside in Spokane Valley. However, I am a business owner here in Spokane. And I'm opposed to this ordinance. From my own personal experience, I want to talk to you a little bit about that. As a matter of fact, the focus of my business is to put people back to work because when I, in 2003, my husband had just graduated from SCC. And we decided that we could go on vacation. So, we left Spokane for Colorado on July, in July, on July 4th, came back to our house had been taken over by a woman with five children. The police came up and told us that we could not go into our home, that we were not allowed to be there. And I found myself homeless at that point without any kind of anything. Everything I had owned was still in the house, which we were buying at the time. My husband took offense because the police would do nothing. We were told we had to go to small claims court, and that was the only recourse that we had. So, my husband took matters into his own hands and burned our house to the ground. We, he ended up doing six months in jail because they gave him a burn barrel out of season and a domestic violence against the young woman after I talked to them about what was happening in our lives. And we, I lived on the streets with my two dogs, which was all that I had left of my family and my home. While my husband was in jail, I lived at around House Charity. I camped out. I was within three blocks every single day because that was the only way I was going to make it to have food or a shower or a place to get my mail or any of those things that you think of as just normal, everyday things. Okay? I'm sorry. I'm almost over out of time. I just wanted to say that this ordinance is just wrong in so many ways. People need to have a safe place to be. And I just want to thank you so much for listening to me. I'm no longer homeless. I'm housed, and I'm, like I said, a business owner. We don't start off being homeless, and a lot of times, we don't end up being homeless. But in order to get to where, that place, we need services and we need housing. And I thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Sarah. William Heelings.
Good evening.
Welcome, William.
I am a resident of downtown, live a few blocks. I am very for this ordinance. I've heard people talking about homeless being criminals. I don't think, obviously, they're criminals. I mean, I like the idea of them going to criminal, you know, like, like the, you know, basically, if they're cited, they go to community court or whatever they call that. But there has to be some kind of accountability. Because when I was growing up, I was taught from right from wrong, but obviously, when you're homeless, you're just trying to survive. And I think I told you before, I've faced that situation, living in my friend's garage on East Bragg. So, I'm not talking, you know, like I'm against it. But there, you know, there's, you know, once you reach out and take, I mean, I don't understand why anybody would want to live in a tent, honestly. Especially with it starting to get cold. And then on top of that, as much as I came to city council, this has been going on for the last couple of years. And you, you were one of these guys, and now you're the president. So, my thing is, is I really would appreciate you do something about this. Because today, as I was walking in, I called Crime Check. Because near my residence where I live, there was like 20-something people doing drugs in a parking lot. And there's a lot of evidence there, walking around like zombies. And this is the same parking lot where people get assaulted, women getting knocked out on the sidewalk. And this is, this is for real. So, I really would appreciate you listening to these people that come up here and doing something. Because it's getting out of hand, and it's sad what's the eight, or seven, eight hundred people living in tents. It's going to be getting cold here soon, and what are you going to do then? You're going to have people up here just saying the same thing over and over. This is, and then you guys get all this money. What's, please do something, Brianne. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, William. That's the end of public testimony. Council commentary. Council Member Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to everybody who commented tonight. Obviously, I have some concerns with the ordinance that's drafted. I worry that it won't be as effective and have the intended outcomes. But I'm not willing to let, you know, perfect be the enemy of the good. I think it is certainly better than what we have in our code right now. It gives us more tools. It gives our officers a lot more tools. And so, there's some positives in here. But ultimately, I do worry that it won't be as effective as we'd like it to be. And so, I'm committed. I mean, if it isn't ultimately effective to bringing it back and reopening it and trying to do some different things, if that's what we need to do, I think that would be the way to go. I also just want to say, I mean, I think, you know, the point of this, we've heard a lot of people kind of insinuate or intimate that this is a penalizing kind of thing. And there is, there's just nothing compassionate about letting people like remain on the street at all. There is nothing compassionate about that. Anybody who says otherwise, I, I don't know. I guess our value systems are just very different. But I just, I can't, I cannot sit in this position and think that it's okay to just sort of ignore and allow what's happening. And it's not just the folks who are obviously camping out. They're clearly at risk. And we've heard a lot of stories of how many of them have been victimized themselves. But there's also others who become victims because of, you know, folks have to do things to survive on the street, and they do certain things that causes impacts to other people. And so, if there's things we can do to keep the entire community safe, I'm going to support that. And we've got to do a better job. I mean, we've essentially lived under a, almost a quasi-permissive camping rule for the last four years as a result of the Boise decision. And that has done, I don't think, anybody any good, whether they are somebody experiencing homeless, homelessness, or one of our business owners, or one of our residents. None of them have had a positive outcome, I believe, because of that decision. And so, if we found a way that we can kind of work within that decision and around that decision to do some good things for our community, I'm going to support that. But again, if it is not, if it is not going to achieve the outcome, if we're seeing that there are gaps, then I am absolutely committed to coming back and revisiting this and bringing forward different tools. So, I will leave it at that, but I will be supporting it tonight.
Council Member Stratten.
Thank you. First, I want to reiterate, I have been to Camp Hope. I've been to Camp Hope more than twice. I've spent a good deal of time when I am there talking to people. I want people to understand that I get that there are some bad players at Camp Hope, but there are also senior citizens. The last time I was there, we met with senior citizen women who were at Camp Hope sleeping in tents because they'd been priced out of their apartments. So, those aren't bad people. I also met 30-something, 20-something young folks who were not on drugs. They were working and going to school. Again, they could not pay their rent because the apartment rentals were going up. So, I just want to be very clear that I don't believe in my heart that everybody at Camp Hope are bad people, and that's not why I'm supporting this. The one thing that resonates with me with this ordinance is I represent Northwest Spokane. I get calls weekly from West Central area, from Lower Crossing, which is behind Kendall Yards, from Summit, folks that live on Summit, those that live in the Mobile Home Park. Used to be San Suzy. I don't know if it's the same name. They live in fear in summers from people that camp down at the river's edge and in those areas. I'm not judging. I'm not saying those are bad people, but I'm saying the homeowners that live along those areas are frightened every year. It's, as long as I've been on council, it's been a reoccurring, every year, we start hearing from people. They're very watchful. They'll call us and say, "We've got campers and we see smoke." And we've handled it so far. I do believe we need to stand up and say something about camping. But I don't do this easily. I have a heart, and I have been around Camp Hope, and I do have great compassion for people that I think we can help and get them focused and moving in the right direction. But we also have to think about those people that we represent that don't feel safe in their homes when you live near that river and near those areas where people tend to camp. So, I will support this. I know it's been a big issue. I know that we'll continue to talk about it and make changes if we need to. But thank you for bringing it forward and for letting me speak.
Council Member Wilkerson.
Thank you. And I too want to thank everybody that's come down here. As you've listened to other people testify, you can certainly hear their lived experience, whether they are for this or against it, and how very real that is to them, from the business owners to the people who are homeless. And we are tasked with trying to find something that is palatable and defensible for our entire community. This has been going on for some time. I have lost track of how many times it has been deferred. It has gone back to our legal, to be looked at, to make it as strong as we possibly can and still be compassionate in the process. It's not perfect, but I will support it. But we cannot stop looking and working towards places that our people can be. So, this is not like the end, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. It is a tool, one of many, I hope, that we'll be able to provide on the other end, including bathrooms downtown, as we go forward looking at this. So, I am supportive, and I know we've had conversations about bathrooms. I won't get into that tonight, but it is a body function.
Council Members DePauw.
Yeah, I will be supporting this, and it's definitely a tough one. I definitely understand lots of concerns about beefing up camping ordinance and what that does to folks living on the street. I'm deeply concerned that this will be seen as just pushing people around and that it's not actually getting people to the services that they need to get back on their feet. But I think this is a good compromise. It's somewhere in the middle that meets both of those needs because we do have to do something, and we know we have to do something. We hear a lot from the community, business community, people that live around downtown. We need to take action, and so I think that this limited scope will be defensible in court, and that's always a concern, but also step in the right direction. And it, and it's not going to be just pushing people around the street for a long time, but rather hoping to connect them. If we were only doing this camping ordinance without having just opened a shelter, without looking for a provider, then I would have a lot more concern. But we are also taking the steps in the right act, the right steps to get people services, to get people shelter. We're still waiting on a service provider for the Trent Resource Center, and there's still more things that we're waiting on to get those people connected to resources and not just into buildings, but back on their feet to long-term stable housing. So, I'll be supporting this now and look forward to the work that still has to come.
Council Member Bingel.
Yes, sir. All right. So, I want to start with the things that I like about this. Number, it's something. It's, it's, it's barely something, but it's something. I wish it went even farther, obviously. Council Member Cathcart and I have proposed any amendments, not just on camping, but also on sit-in lie, which I understand is a different issue, but they're very intertwined. They're both addressing very similar things. And so, the trouble for me with this one is that it doesn't cover, this is, to me, this is a camping ordinance almost in name only because it addresses very few areas, very few areas in the city. And I know that we've brought, you know, we're worried about legal analysis and will it hold up in court and everything like that. I would just like to reiterate that Council Member Cathcart and I, working with the administration, came up with a sit-in lie ordinance, which I understand is, again, not the same thing as camping, but was very legally defensible, was far less expansive than LA, which has not been successfully challenged in court. And still, we did not move that one forward. And so, while this one, you know, might be legally permissible, it could also go much farther and still be very legally permissible. I think that's important to do, to note. The thing that bothers me the most about this, though, I think, is that it's a camping ordinance, an anti-camping ordinance, that doesn't address the largest homeless camp probably in the country, certainly on the West Coast, which is Camp Hope. For me, we're talking about Camp Hope just this weekend alone. And I've gone for over 10 hours talking with officers, talking with residents, talking with businesses, talking with the homeless, going through, getting everybody's experiences, everybody's, you know, understanding and thoughts and where they're at on it. And for me, I think this one is really irritating the most because it doesn't address Camp Hope. I spoke with businesses down there, and what I learned, which absolutely blew me away and broke my heart, I have, my heart was broke for many people in that situation, just about everybody involved. For the business owners, my heart broke because many of them are not reporting crimes to the police anymore because they're worried about it being considered a too dangerous place as the risk in that area continues to climb and insurance companies might not insure them anymore because it's simply too dangerous a place. The number of businesses that could shut down in there if they lost their insurance because that area is too dangerous is staggering, and it's, it'll, again, it'll rip your heart out because, as Council President said earlier, the city has invested a lot in the East Central neighborhood. You listen to organizations like ESBA, they love this area of town. They've invested a lot. You talk to every business owner in that area, they love that area. They have invested a lot in that area, and they're watching as East Central is being sacrificed without us doing anything. And I think the thing that bothers me the most is we sit here and we continue to not address this. You know, I read a Range article where, you know, we heard that it was the governor's top priority. And I would love to see what all of its secondary and tertiary priorities are and how long it takes to address those because Camp Hope has been going on for well over nine months. It's been my entire time on council. Camp Hope has existed. And not only are they not going to be helping the city to divert people into different areas of the city, but now we're actually going to be expanding the footprint there to include some power shelters. You know, there's plans to get water and power into those secondary areas because they're going to turn it into some sort of disaster response area. And the trouble is that everybody has hit the nail on the head in a lot of ways where, you know, we keep talking about housing crisis. And for sure, there isn't, you know, a ton of housing in the area. But the thing is that if we're putting shelters there and saying they're temporary, we're kidding ourselves. And we need to be honest with the people in that area and the people in the city that has in the city that, as we're building shelter space, which is necessary. I've been calling for three things since I got into office. We need more shelter space, we need funding for mental health and addiction services, we need to be able to regulate the public spaces. This ordinance is, again, barely part of regulating the public spaces, but it is part in there. I've advocated for the Trent Shelter to make sure that we have more shelter space. I'll continue to support being able to connect people into safe-living areas with services We just saw a news article that came out, and it said it was like Lord of the Flies on drugs. You know, we heard about women getting held down raped in that camp. We learned about, you know, a young man in a drug deal gone bad getting branded by a piece of Ray Bar. And we continue to sit here and say, "We're going to do something with a camping ordinance," except for, again, it doesn't address the elephant in the room, which is the largest homeless camp, certainly on the West Coast and probably in the country. And while it sounds like I'm not going to support this, I do intend to support this because it's something, again, barely something, but it's something. And the trouble for me, as I'm listening to my colleagues, is, again, one of the main reasons why we continue to shut down, talking to Cathcart's, sit-in lie ordinances, things that he'd been working on with the administration, was the question was, "Where will they go?" Right? And we keep saying, "Oh, okay, now that we've opened the Trent Shelter, the Trent Shelter can't house all of our homeless folks." And so I just don't understand how that question has been answered in our hearts as we're moving forward. I see a lot of, it feels like a lot of double speak. It's frustrating for me to try and move forward in good faith on these issues when I don't feel like there's, you know, a good-faith discussion that's happening. And I think that what's going to happen is we're going to be judged by the things that we allow to happen, and what we're allowing to happen at Camp Hope is pretty despicable. So to all those involved, to all those in the East Central neighborhood that are having to deal with that, that are bearing the burden for the city, I apologize. We're continuing to do what we can, and I hope to see much, much, much more going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. And again, I just want to note, there's some people in the audience talking we can hear. It's very distracting and it's disrespectful to other people who are talking. So please, if you want to talk to your neighbor, please go out in the lobby. Thanks. Councilmember Kinnear?
Thank you. I wanted to respond to Councilmember Bingle's assertion that nothing's being done at Camp Hope. I know Johnny Perkins, our administrator, has been working with Washdott, that Department of Transportation, for a solution, and he continues to work on that. It's a process, there are a lot of people there that need to be assessed and found places for. So to say that nothing's being done is to not give him the credit that's due and that he has been working to alleviate some of the issues that are there. I wanted to give a little bit of background. We've been working on this for a while, and I sent around, drafted this to Homeless Coalition, League of Women Voters, DSP, and several other groups. I want to make sure everybody had this to look at, to respond to, to make corrections to, to add their voice, and we got lots of great comments back. We incorporated some of them in this final draft. And some of you may remember that this original camping ordinance happened in 2018. That's right about the time Martin B. Boise came down, the ruling came down from the Ninth Circuit Court. So pretty much put what we had worked on for months and months in limbo and on hold, and we had to regroup and start again. This is not sit-in lie, this is a camping ordinance. It is about behavior, not pinpointing individuals, and I want to make that very clear. The one piece that I think is the most important for me is it prohibits camping at all times, regardless of availability of shelter space anywhere in the city where an officer, a police officer, can document that the activity poses a substantial danger to any person, an immediate threat, and/or an unreasonable risk of harm to public health or safety, or a disruption to vital government services. That is a catch-all phrase that the legal department put in so that we didn't have to list every single thing we wanted to regulate. So that gives an officer some discretion to cite people when they see something, regardless of where it is, that is an immediate harm. And for me, the most important thing, of course, and again, this is about behavior, is regulating what kind of behavior happens along the Spokane River and Leittalk Creek. So Councilmember, you mentioned fires, and that is a very real danger. So we see people camping in those areas, and there are fires that are started because they want to cook or they want to keep warm. It's easy for those fires to spread into neighborhoods and knock a neighborhood down really quickly if it's not caught in time. So that was an important part for me. I also want to mention that we have other tools. We have trespassing law, we have pedestrian interference, we have aggressive panhandling to go along with some of these tools that will keep our neighborhoods safer. And this isn't prioritizing one neighborhood over another. So we're not saying downtown, you're special. We want to make sure that nothing happens downtown. We want to make all our neighborhoods safer. And so this does not prioritize one neighborhood over another because every neighborhood has issues with this. And this is a start. After the mayor signs it, it'll be thirty days before it takes effect. So there is time to get it up and running and make sure that people are directed to shelter and to services if needed. That's it.
All right, and I'll close out, you know, a couple weeks ago, the mayor, Councilmember Kinnear, and I were in her conference room talking about this when she agreed to this ordinance. And I said, "You know, Mayor, nobody is going to like this ordinance. When we're going to get testimony, nobody is going to, unqualified, say, 'Yeah, this is great,'" regardless of their perspective. And that's because some words on a paper and a law cannot cure what ails us in our community, which is we don't have enough housing. We don't, and everyone pretty much agrees on that. But it impacts different people different ways, and if you're a lower-income person, if you're a person of color, if you're disabled, if you're elderly, if you're struggling with some mental health, you have a substance abuse disorder, it's going to impact you way more than other people. And you can talk to everyone at Camp Hope, they'll each have a different story, and that's not everybody who's homeless. We have nine hundred people living in shelters. We have eight hundred people, by last count, probably a lot more, but who don't live in shelters but live outside or in their cars. And they want a room with a door. That's what they want, like all of us do. We go to bed at night. And there's not many that I know of that have turned down a room with a door that gave them the basic dignity of any other person that we would expect in our, the rooms where we sleep. And that is the challenge that we need to work on, is getting enough rooms with doors and dignity for people to live their authentic lives and be productive members of our community, however they can do that. It's going to take a lot of money, it's a lot of effort, and there's obstacles along the way to doing that. But since I've been on council, which a little over six and a half years, we have increased by millions of dollars a year, the amount of money going into homeless sheltering, service and other services, millions of dollars a year for policing, millions of dollars a year for fire. We have increased the resources, and not just grants coming from the federal, the state government, but our local tax dollars that we're paying for. We have increased that. We have said this is a priority for the community. But the rest of the world marches on, whether it's pandemics or economic dislocation or the hottest housing market in the nation almost, we're still just running to catch up. And so we have so much to do. And in the meantime, we flail about, well, what could we do in the meantime to make things a little easier for everyone? Those who are homeless, those who are property owners who deal with issues, those who are just fearful of people in their neighborhood who are homeless. What do we do? And so we come up with some laws. This is one piece. It is also within the context of some pretty strict federal laws and the Constitution that we all live under of what government can and can't do, including that Camp Hope is on state land. So we don't really have the ability to go tell them what to do. But we have those dilemmas, we do the best we can within the law, within our resources. I'm convinced that this set of amendments to the law that we already had on the books is an improvement and better than some of the things that have been recommended. That's why I'm supporting it. We have a lot farther to go, as everyone mentioned, but I hope that when we do it, we'll do it all together, recognizing that each of us are of equal value in our community and all our needs need to be made. Ms. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, sorry, I can't raise my hand. But yeah, I do appreciate what you are saying. I want to say a couple things here. So the substantial danger part, substantial harm piece that is in this still only applies to city property. That is not going to help us at Camp Hope whatsoever. You know, we talked about the fires, there was legitimate fire danger, you know, down, as everybody was talking about. There's been at least half a dozen fires within Camp Hope and the surrounding areas already this year that has caused a significant danger and significant risk to that area for the residents of Camp Hope. We're hearing from people in this camp that they're being told, "Don't go to shelters. Don't go to these areas because you're going to get your own private tiny house if you hang out and you stay here," you know? And you're right, everybody does have equal values, and that includes the people around the camps themselves. We are hyper-focused on the homes, and there is a lot that needs to be done to help those folks for sure. But what we cannot do, and what we continue to do in these conversations, is to neglect the folks who are affected by these camps. And now we're talking about, you know, people in the areas who are still camping, you know, under the viaduct by their house. That's why we should expand it to all viaducts in the city, as Councilman Cathcart proposed earlier today, and as places in East Central, as the Reg Business Association asked us to do, to make it where it was citywide and not just in the downtown area, because there are those same risks at viaducts throughout the city.
Thank you.
So while we're talking about this, we're talking about the, all people have value. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And let's not be so hyper-focused on one group that we forget so many others.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that none of the amendments that have been considered would deal with Camp Hope because Camp Hope is on land that's owned by someone else. This ordinance has always been, from the beginning, when we banned all camping on all city property, only city property. We have put in laws for other property owners. We have trespass laws, we have burglary laws, we have assault laws, we have aggressive panhandling laws. We have all sorts of laws that protect people if our law enforcement enforces them, those laws. We have a shortage of law enforcement people. We're trying to increase the resources to handle that so that people feel safe no matter what neighborhood they live in. So we have put those laws into place. This law is just about people camping on land owned by the city, which is illegal under this law unless there's a lack of shelter beds. And that's the one thing that we can do, and I like to remind people that Camp Hope started as a protest when the mayor closed our biggest shelter, the Way Out Shelter, our most popular, most-used, and it started out as a small protest for that, and then it just expanded and expanded. And I am super excited we have the Trent Shelter, and it'd be great if we put some bathrooms and some sleeping pods in there, would be even better. And I wish we'd had it a year earlier instead of closing those shelter beds. But even if we'd had it a year earlier, we would still need more. But what we really need is not more shelter spaces, we need a lot more transitional housing because what's going on now is people are just being warehoused in shelters wherever. They have no place to the next step, and then there's no apartments. And so we have to move people through those, and those don't all have to be low barrier. People can build on their journey and get to their place. And so I've been very excited about some of the discussion that I've been hearing, including in the business community, about a housing levy to build not more shelters, but more transitional and permanently affordable housing, so that the time in the shelter will be brief while people stabilize, get their mental health and their substance abuse disorder, if that's their issue, or if they just need a clean place to live and work and increase their savings account so they can afford it first and last, and that we can have more affordable housing in the market sector. So we have to do all those things, and we have to do them all at once. And this ordinance is one way to move forward and try to do that within the law. With that, prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero, and we're going to first do first reading ordinance, and then we're going to take a short break.
Ordinance C. 36-271 relating to the permitted use of forfeiture funds, admitting sections 8.19, .030, and .040 of the Spokane Municipal Code, deferred from September 12, 2022 agenda. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
Teresa Simon, you're signed up if you want to testify on this.
What?
It's on police forfeitures.
I think so, too.
Okay, all right. We're going to be on break till 8:15. We'll come back and finish up. We have about eighteen people signed up for open form. up. We have about 18 people signed up for open forum. All right. We're coming out of recess. We have open forum left. And again, same thing, three minutes. Please don't testify about something that we talked about already. But we'll start off, John Lemus, and then Dave Bilsland, and then Rick Bowkuk. Welcome again, John.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council members. I'll start with my usual legal disclaimer, so that people aren't able to take shots at my employment. I am here as a private citizen, not representing an employer or any of the organizations I serve on the board of. I'm here today to talk about the Rid Path. The Rid Path is in need of some serious intervention from the city. The amount of illegal activity happening in the building and on the sidewalk and the facade is staggering at best, and that's putting it lightly. The Rid Path is not what Mr. Wells and his partners advertised. I will say that the current owners of the building are trying their best to make the, are trying their best to make the best out of a very bad situation. Many of the tenants chose not to pay rent during the eviction moratorium. When you take so many people with so many significant issues, and you stack them 12 floors high, you're left with what I affectionately am now calling Camp Home. The folks at NEI Black have explained to me that they've reached out to the city countless, countless times for assistance, only to hear crickets. I know from personal experience that the police don't answer calls for service to the Rid Path unless there's someone with a weapon, or unless there is a dead body in the building. On one occasion, I was told by SPD to walk over someone who had passed, and they left him out in the hallway. That person was there for hours, waiting for the coroner to pick them up. Illegal drugs and drinking are commonplace at the Rid Path. There are a group of residents who sit out on the sidewalk every day in violation of sit-in lie and drink heavily. And they're, get very aggressive when they're asked to stop. These are individuals who are not homeless. They have homes, and they're making conscious decisions to break our city laws. SPD has refused to do anything. I've emailed Chief Myrtle asking for a meeting of the minds, and I've not heard from him. I will say that the Rid Path has been a drain on Spokane Fire Department resources. They were here twice today. On the weekends, that can be free four or five times. It would be incumbent on the city to look into the cost of housing a care team or an ARU out of the Rid Path as a pilot. The city has invested a substantial amount of money into the Rid Path, and it should commit to help to come and fix some of these issues. And without doing so, it will likely not ever see any repayment of the money that it put forward.
John, your time's up.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much for coming down, John, and letting us know. Dave Bilsland? And after Dave, Rick Bowkuk, and then Elizabeth Oakes.
Between sit-in lie and what you passed tonight, you're making homelessness illegal. And that's ridiculous when we're short by 25,000 housing units. I don't know how you guys are gonna sleep tonight after passing that, because people who are homeless don't have money, that's why they're there.
Dave, so stay away from what we've already talked about tonight, but love to hear about anything else.
I'm referring to sit-in lie.
Okay, we'll keep, just, don't mention what we've been working on tonight.
Right. But those are the same people that you're picking on with sit-in lie. Where are they supposed to sit? Sitting is a normal human thing to do. And if I can't sit downtown, and that makes it illegal for me, too, then I have a major problem. I have a bad back. I have to stop and sit sometimes. That's just the way it is. And you're making it illegal. As an elder, I feel seriously offended by that. People need to sit. They also need bathrooms downtown. I can't walk into a tavern just to use a bathroom. They'll tell me to get the heck out, just like they tell anybody else. You're making it harder and harder and harder on people who already have it hard. They're in the hardest place in their life. It doesn't get harder than that. That is rock bottom, and you're kicking them while they're down. Expect an initiative process to eliminate both of those laws. And I have a kicker of one that's gonna make every one of them get signed. So you guys think again about making homelessness illegal. Sit-in lie does it, and so does what you did today. I am going to fight those. I will not stand. I've been fighting it for 19 years. I'll fight it for another 19 years if I have to.
Thanks for coming down, Dave. Rick Bowkuk, Elizabeth Oakes, and Daniel McClay.
You know, you hear about resources, not having them, and yet they're gonna have the resources to enforce sit-in lie. But I was thinking about this one problem that keeps, keeps coming to me. You know, like when you walk over here on Spokane Falls Boulevard to that door over there, don't you just love that sidewalk? That nice, beautiful sidewalk that has 15,000 Lime Scooter streaks on it? Then there's this one here, it's got a bunch too. And they have a civil thing on there that says, you know, they're not supposed to go on sidewalks. They do it anyway, and it's never enforced. Yet, the people that ride Lime Scooters have to have a credit card or a debit card. So I'm thinking about, you don't have resources yet. The resources are right there every time they violate the law. How come they don't go after them? Because they say they don't have the resources. It's weird how they say that, when the resources are right there every time they violate the law. This is like, it says an automatic $100 fine. I would say that one officer doesn't get $100 an hour, and he doesn't get $100 in five minutes. Why don't they go after the Lime Scooters? Then you hear these people that are part of downtown Spokane Partnership, they're complaining about not enforcing the sit-in lie law, but they are responsible. They're called the managers of the Business Improvement District. They're supposed to be responsible for cleaning up sidewalks, too. And yet, there's another nice sidewalk downtown. It's at the Police Place. You know where the Police Department is? You go on that sidewalk. That sidewalk's worse than this one, and it doesn't even have Lime Scooter marked on it. It's actually easier to clean, but they're not doing it, and I don't know why. I mean, it's, I mean, that's the police, that's where the police are. They got their cars parked there. Is anybody gonna be sitting in line by the Police Department? I don't know. I just know that there's some things that need to be paid attention to. If you're gonna go after this group, then why aren't you going after this group? This group has money, this one don't. This one can pay, you're resources, this one can't. It doesn't, does it make any sense about what I'm saying here? I'm hoping it does. I think these Lime Scooters are dangerous when they're, have you ever been in the crossfire of one of them? You know, I mean, they had them back here. I almost was gonna put the bikes over there to block, to block them from coming in, but I didn't do that, but I wanted to, just, just block them from coming in on that sidewalk back there. So I think you should be paying attention to that, too. They need to be, this, this Lime Scooter thing needs to be, it's a law. They need to be enforced. There's part of your resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Elizabeth Oakes. After Elizabeth, Daniel McClay, and then Teresa Simon.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. It was great to hear from the Presbyterians earlier. Their intentions to step up, offering their land assets and their open hearts to help others was inspiring. It's in stark contrast to the reason that I'm here, which is the Catalyst Project. The way it's taken shape is just as opposite as it could be. News of Catalyst's arrival stunned my neighborhood and proved a blaring example of how swift nonprofit corporate and government powers can be. At this juncture, I realize having an objection to a state agency or a charity as large as Catholic Charities is ridiculous, especially without an ally in local government, deep pockets, and solid legal counsel. The term "too big to fail" comes to mind. As public process was circumvented, residents only found out about this when the spokesman broke the story. I'm definitely curious what other plans are in the works, like the future location of City of Hope 2.0, which Catholic Charities refuses to share. For now, for now, we know Catalyst is moving forward, and it would seem with very little oversight and no checks and balances in place. I'm shocked they will not offer wraparound services to their clients. This is according to Jonathan Malahan when he spoke at the West Hills Town Hall. From everything I've learned on the subject, a shelter without wraparound services doesn't have a great chance at success of, at truly creating change. To take so much money under the auspice of helping people and to not offer full services to support them in their recovery and on their path to being housed is a total disservice to the people and a misuse of taxpayer money. I've taken this Catalyst opportunity to research different approaches to homelessness at large. Another approach many cities have implemented are inclusionary clauses for new constructions with more than a certain number of units. Doing so ensures there's a dispersment of units available at different price points for different income levels throughout the entire city. This also ensures geographic equity, so that one neighborhood is not unfairly burdened. If Spokane has a program like this on the books already, I haven't been able to find it. Of course, there would have to be an economic feasibility study. This would inform the policy that would be responsive to market conditions and Spokane's needs. Something so thoughtful, equitable, and sustainable couldn't be rushed Something so thoughtful, equitable, and sustainable couldn't be rushed through sloppily and in the shadows, as Catalyst has been. I hope such thoughtful approaches are part of our future, and hearing from the Presbyterians earlier made me think they might be. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Daniel McClay, if he's still here? He was. I don't see him. So Teresa.
Can you do this again? I've done a public records request. Hello, hello, hello?
Yep. I think it's on.
Oh, good. Can somebody plug me in here? So I did a public records request on an email I got from one of the city council members, and I believe once it's public, I can share it. So when that does come, I'll be sharing that. Yes, please. Okay, so we're still trying to get going here. Is this my mouse? Can you get me to the drive? Okay, E is good. Okay, so I just wanted to share with you that in 2012, I owned a property in 2009 on Green Street. In that particular property, I sold to Steve and Jeannie Spink. There were three chronic nuisance orders on the property. And so when they talk about the Rid Path and the issues with the Rid Path and the police not coming, they came out, they came out 1,000 times, and they did nothing to stop the damage to the neighborhood. There's one. I have two more. See if I can... I don't know how to use this thing. Okay, so in doing this, this thing made the spokesman review. That's the garage. Thousand police calls. That's the garage. One of the neighbors, and I'm going to bring pictures of her, was assaulted eight times. Eight times that she was assaulted. Now, why were they so mad at her? Because Officer Strassenberg asked her to go out and collect names of neighbors for Safe Streets Now. And when she did that, she became a target in the neighborhood. And they beat her up eight times. Inside her house twice, out in the yard. She was getting police escorts home. And there was a lot of damage done. She's still damaged today. So she came to my house and asked me if I could sell her house. And I said, "Who are you? You look really familiar to me." And she said, "Oh, my name is Lori Stewart, and I live on Green Street. And I'm having problems with the house, the yellow house in the back," which was the house I sold on a contract for like $113. And when the county assessor came back when we were all through this, it was worth $30,000 if it was worth that at all. So apparently, the police department and the city hall was responsible for allowing this damage to continue on for three years. We had one kid left in a coma at Ferris, two kids left hostage on school buses, and I have letters from the school districts of the kids being assaulted... Can I get back to my page? Of the kids being assaulted. And they were begging. They were literally begging for... This is the interior of the house when I got it back. And you know, Mary Meramatsu had a conversation with my attorney whether or not I would let this go on another three months and let my neighbors be assaulted.
Teresa, this chapter's over for tonight.
Okay, good. We only got about five or six more weeks of this.
Okay.
But we'll have this discussion about the email that I got from, who I got it from.
All right. Thanks for coming down. All right, Libby Pugel. If I'm not pronouncing that, you can introduce yourself.
It's Pugel.
Pugel, okay. Thanks.
Pugel, Sam.
Okay.
Did that result in an illegal arrest?
All right. We're done with you, Teresa, for tonight. We'll come back. And Libby, just hang on for a sec while she gets her drive out of there.
If he just right-clicked on it, probably a good old cops orientation. Go over to E and click and see if you get it.
Okay, now I can't see. That's too small for my eyes. Can you try to eject it again?
Welcome, Libby. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Libby Pugel, and I reside on the north side of Spokane. I have three points to raise during this open forum. I'm a novice, first time I've attended a city council meeting. The first point relates to much discussion that's already gone on about homeless encampments. So I just generally want to say that I strongly endorse prohibiting homeless people from camping on public lands around the Spokane River and in downtown. There are shelters, maybe not enough, but many people don't want to go to the shelters if they are available because they can't bring their drugs or alcohol with them. I was recently in Portland, Oregon, where I grew up, and then in Seattle, where my husband grew up. And we were disgusted by the homeless encampments that were near our downtown hotels in those cities. Thankfully, we left San Francisco nine years ago and love living in Spokane. The homeless make our communities less safe, dirty, and undesirable. So please don't let Spokane go the way of Portland, Seattle, or San Francisco. My second point involves the introduction of CRT, Critical Race Theory, and trans or other gender identity education in our Spokane public schools. My question is, does the city council have power to regulate what is taught in our local public schools? No. Okay. Then I just want to be on the record to vehemently oppose a curriculum that embraces CRT and gender identity, especially to grade schoolers. I'm not a parent, but my property taxes are used in part to support poorly-run public schools with declining math and reading numbers versus other developed countries. History should be taught, including the evils of slavery and segregation, but also desegregation and the great strides our country has made. We elected the first half African-American president in Obama and have an African-American vice president. CRT seems to wrongfully shame white students and tends to ignore merit-based achievements, not based on the color of your skin. My final and third point addresses sanctuary cities. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that Spokane is not a sanctuary city?
Correct.
Okay. Good. And I do not want it to be declared as such. I'm all in favor of legal immigration, but our southern...
Libby, your time's up for tonight.
Okay.
But thanks for coming down to your first meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next is Nancy Bilbao, and then I think Linda Peterson. Either of you here? And after Linda is Justin O'Connell. And then Sheri Barnett.
Hi again.
Hi.
From Dick's Hamburgers once again. I just want to say that we have a really, really bad problem of the drug abuse in this city. And that's what we have to contend with down on Division and Third. I've got an enterprise property right next to Division, and I was wondering if city council or the SPD would be open to having a cop shop down there. What I notice is, I got to know a border patrol, and he's been sitting over behind Frankie Doodles a lot. And it just seems like it's kind of helped that area. But still, it's like between midnight and 6 o'clock in the morning where they come out and they start dumping everything in our lots. I don't know who to approach on that. If somebody could give me a suggestion, that would be awesome. Another point I'd like to get across is, you know, we're talking about the housing for people. And I know, I talked to a lady that was from Camp Hope today. She has not Alzheimer's, but she's very, very incapacitated. But I said, I asked her about why she wasn't looking for housing, and she said it's because of the fact that there's too many druggies in the housing projects. I know a girl that just got put into housing with her family, and this was probably six months ago. And they were guaranteed housing. They were probably the first ones in that housing project. And they were semi-guaranteed that there'd be no druggies in there. And sure enough, they're there. They're getting robbed. Her car had gotten an alternator removed. So we have a big problem with drug people. And I don't know what the answer is there, but it just seems like the more apparent... When the police are around, there's just less happenings, I guess, going on. So I'm open to any suggestions on that part of it, and I don't know who to contact.
Sure. I would just suggest if you Google Spokane cops, and you can talk to the closest office that they have to you, and they would... And there's also Neighborhood Resource Office for your neighborhood. But Spokane cops, they're going to be the friendliest way to find out what more can be done.
Okay. All right.
And I would just add, if you want to send me an email, I'm on the cops board, and I can help you make that connection for the cop shop idea.
Super.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming down, Linda. All right. Justin O'Connell, and then Sheri Barnett, and then Christine Q., I believe. I'm not quite getting the last name on that. Hi, Justin.
Hello. I reside in Spokane. Justin O'Connell, Central Planning. Tonight, I want to talk about how in no way we want to be attracting new and exciting industries to the area. But first, I wanted to know, did you hear from Elon? If not, we'll figure that out. But in 2009, Satoshi Nakamoto invented Bitcoin. And ever since then, we've had trouble keeping people's faith in fiat currencies. They're losing faith in the US dollar, the euro, et cetera. The Bitcoiners are worshiping a man named Max Keiser, the high priest of Bitcoin. Now, early on, we were able to take it to the Bitcoin community through the Ross Ulbricht case. He invented the Silk Road. Essentially, you can buy and sell mostly cannabis on that online marketplace on the dark net. And we stuck Ross with two lifetimes in prison. That is way more than El Chapo got. But since then, this idea has kind of spread. Now, central planning had control of the money system for 500 years until Satoshi Nakamoto introduced this idea of decentral planning. We had zero competition, and now we have all this competition. Totally disrupted our business model. Now, regionally, we've taken the necessary steps to root out Bitcoin. Chelan County, Washington, hiked hydroelectric rates 29%. They basically were charging people based on what they were using the energy for. Now, we're not letting the Bitcoiners do the capitalism regionally. One company in us had the gall to start a Bitcoin mine. Us played a little loosey-goosey with the zoning, I believe. Responsible Northwest Washington opposed the plan. They said the resources could be used for better purposes. That's a good point. How does the free market know all this stuff, anyway? We need to outdo the 29% of Chelan County and tax Bitcoin mining at 99%. We could just ban it. We don't want new industries bringing jobs here. The Bitcoin-related jobs industry surged 390% in recent years, I think since the pandemic. We need to follow the New York model. That is a moratorium on Bitcoin mining, but then the mayor takes his salary in Bitcoin? I don't know how that works. It's called the "let them eat" fiat policy, I believe. Maybe we get the police to target the cold wallets where Bitcoiners store their Bitcoins. At any rate, we want to make sure all the Bitcoin jobs go to Wyoming. It's not only new and exciting industries like Bitcoin we must crush. It's all biz. No helping local entrepreneurs use vacant historic buildings with a permit fee waiver. No economic development incentive programs. No local business preferences. No public partnership banks like Oakland-Santa Fe, the Bank of North Dakota. More importantly, ban Bitcoin mining. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. All right, Sheri Barnett. After Sheri, Christine Quinn, I believe, and then William Hughlings.
President begs, members of the council. I'm Sheri Barnett. I live in Spokane. And it seems to me that we've forgotten how this country was founded. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, when we are establishing justice and integrity, and this nation was a judicial nation, and it was known throughout the world as a place where righteousness existed. But now, nations, when they lose their foundation, they die. And they become corrupt, and the leadership becomes corrupt. We're corrupt. Now, in our communication, our media is very willing to tell us lies. I remember when Joe Biden decided to run for president, and he made no bones. "I'm going to open up the border. I'm going to tear down the walls." And now, it's written, it's on media that, oh, they're saying that the border is under control, and what's happening that's wrong is the fault of the previous administration. So many things are being just run through artificial intelligence and through the media, and people are not getting the truth. In the school systems, this CRT, the changing of sexuality, for all history, human beings have functioned very well with a father, mother, sister, brother, uncle, aunt, the family. And when you knock that out from under and immorality takes over, nations go under. We cannot allow this to happen in our school systems. We cannot allow people to get by with lies. We need truth. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. Christine Quinn, and then William Hughlings, and then Sarah Neelands, and then Greg Bogart.
Hi, Christine Quinn from West Hills. And I want to read to you from an article from 1965 in the Spokesman Review. Merchants Motels Blame Freeway for Business Loss. A once-thriving business area on Spokane's west side is suffering from lack of traffic since the newest section of the Spokane freeway opened December 7. And this continued, and most of the business closed. And there's a word I got from Betsy, chronic disinvestment, in an op-ed she wrote. And that's exactly what West Hills has been suffering from for a long time. When the freeway went in, initially, there was supposed to be an exit for West Hills, and it was left off. And what resulted was not good. If you go to Government and Sunset, you'll see four corners of blight. It's awful. And what's really upsetting is I get on the Department of Commerce site, and it's to strengthen communities so all residents may thrive and prosper. Well, they're not helping us do that. They're doing the exact opposite. And that's it. I just hope we can get help and revitalize and thrive. I just hope we can get help and revitalize and thrive. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. William. And after William will be Sarah, and then Greg Bogart, although I don't think Greg's still here.
Good evening. I live downtown, as I said before, a few blocks from here. But something I want to talk about, and I'm going to keep on talking about this, because it's concerning to me every time I walk out my apartment. Now, I think last time I mentioned walking out my apartment and some guy with some foil, you know, lighting up. Today--
Just a second. Christine, your bag's up here.
But today, on my lunch break, it's with my friend. She works at a law firm, and we're just walking around, and we see a guy sitting on the -- and this is in an alley, obviously, which is nice. But he was sitting there, and he was messing with his needle, okay? And he didn't do the drugs in front of us, but he probably seen us standing there, so he -- but I've actually seen people chewed up in front of me. And they were, and you could see it in their eyes, that they were so, you know, they needed their fix, you know, this fentanyl that's going around. And so downtown, you see it. I mean, I heard somebody saying something about the police precinct. When the mayor and Betsy Wilkerson, when they opened that, I remember that day, because I went, and I was so excited because she promised to have law enforcement on foot, bicycles, okay? This summer, I did not see any SPD officers on these bicycles, okay? They went and spent a lot of money on these electric bicycles. But I didn't see them. I don't see them on foot. I don't even see them hardly driving around. I've actually called Crime Check. They've actually called me back and asked me if they're still out there. You know, this is after, you know, reporting that I heard a woman screaming, and this is at 2:30 at night. But they called me back and asked me if she's still, if there's still, you know, disturbance out on the street. So, I mean, like I said, I feel so unsafe sometimes, and it shouldn't be that way. I mean, we get people come here from other parts. I mean, I talked to -- I'm sorry. It's just what's happening downtown with crime and the sit and lie ordinance, which is going to hopefully help it, I mean, if they start enforcing it. I mean, maybe people like myself and businesses will, you know, you know, I don't know, look forward to, you know, living and coming downtown, because I've talked to people that don't even want to come down here. It's pretty sad, but--
Thanks, William. Sarah.
Good evening again, Council President and Regals members. I said earlier, my name is Sarah Neelands, and I reside in Spokane Valley. However, I have a business here in Spokane. The name of it is Spokes of a Wheel, and our focus is on putting low-to-no-income folks back to work. We are very interested in doing things like cleaning up the garbage and taking care of graffiti abatement, that sort of thing. But one of the biggest things with cleaning up of the garbage, we absolutely love that you brought in the garbage-to-energy plant. And I'd like to suggest that you think about bringing in another industry of the same sort. It's called Green Tree Plastics, and they are right now are for sale. They are in Indiana. What they do is they take caps and lids and all those plastic pieces that the recyclers won't take, they melt them down, and they make buddy benches, they make picnic tables, they make all these different types of wonderful furniture, outdoor furniture, from these plastic caps. And this is a really big problem. I know it's silly to even think about it, but all of that ends up someplace. And I would love to just see it here in Spokane and make a new industry and provide new jobs, and I think that would make a huge difference for a lot of people. And I just want to thank you so much for letting me have the chance to visit with you folks. I was planning on having a proposal for you by the end of the week, because I know that's when your proposal, your deadline is. Unfortunately, because this just happened within the last two weeks of them saying that they were going to sell, I was not able to put that information together in a packet for you. So I won't be here this year, but hopefully by next year, I will have something for you. All right. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Sarah. And again, Greg Bogart. I don't see him. All right. That brings us to the end of open forum. Thanks, everybody. Please take care of yourself if you can't take care of someone else, and we'll see you again next Monday. We're adjourned.